...who lost their lives and were injured during the Boston Marathon bombings of April 15th, 2013, and also the same declaration on Thursday, March 27th, 2014, in order of Lieutenant Walsh and firefighter Kennedy of the Boston Fire Department who died in the line of duty on March 26th, 2014, and another proclamation for half-staff from all buildings from sunrise until sunset on Tuesday, April 8th, in order of Officer Greg Maloney of the Plymouth Police Department who died in the line of duty on Tuesday, April 1st. Please observe a moment of silence in their honor. Thank you very much. All right, Keith, what do you have for mail for us tonight?
Chairman, just a couple of items. One is that we received a notice from Mass DOT, or actually from the Governor, regarding the Chapter 90 program administered by Mass DOT announcing this year's allocation to Littleton of $391,000 under Chapter 90. That is conditioned upon passage of the Transportation Bond Bill, which right now I think is still in conference committee, but it's a slight increase over the funds we received last year. Also, just today, we received in the mail a supplemental letter from Mass DOT announcing one time $58,650 that Littleton will be receiving under the so-called Winter Rapid Recovery Road Program, that there's a total of $40,000 that's being distributed statewide according to the Chapter 90 formula, one time, and we get $58,000 and change out of that. Last item in the packet is a letter that we received from longtime Light and Water General Manager Savas Dinos announcing his retirement effective May 31, 2014, after 32 years of service, and that's an awful lot of time for his adopted home. I know he lives in Groton, but as he reminds us, but that's an awful long time of dedication and service to Littleton, so we wish him the best.
All right, thank you. We can move on to public input. Does anybody have anything they want to add for public input? Yes, sir.
Just one quick thing, I'm sure it was heard, but I just didn't want to let everyone know that Trowman Tompkins returned successfully from Afghanistan, from his service over there, so he's back in, he's actually back in Littleton. He isn't back on the streets yet, but he is back in town, so we're very happy that he got out of there unscathed.
That's great news. All right, seeing nothing else, I'll go with member updates. Alex, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
I'd just like to congratulate the Knoxes, Joe and Kathy, on their 44 years of marriage. Kathy, I don't know how you do it, but congratulations. Also, the football golf tournament is May 2nd, Friday, May 2nd, and come out and join us. It's always fun.
Also, happy birthday to Kathy Knox, and I do just want to recognize that this is the first meeting that Joe has, I believe Joe has ever missed as a selectman in all his years of serving, going back to the 80s, so just want to give him a well-deserved night off and wish him the best. With that, I think we can move on to item three, which is a street opening permit, a waiver request. Is there an applicant here to speak about this, for 135 Goldsmith Street?
Definitely.
Okay. So this is a request where the application has been submitted, there's a five-year moratorium on excavating into streets that have been paved, and this is a request to waive that requirement and be able to cut into the street. So with that, I'd let the applicant speak on their behalf and let us know what this is about.
The house has half oil and half electric, but the oil runner and the whole heating system on the oil side is junk and has to be replaced completely. So right now, we just moved in a week ago, we all bought it in December, and we're just literally two rooms of the house, so if we can't, we want to bring a gas line to the house, unless it's cheaper, more energy efficient. So if we can't, then we won't have heat in the house next winter, basically. We can't do it this summer.
I saw that on the application, that you won't have heat. What's wrong with putting oil throughout the house?
It's more expensive.
So if something you won't have heat, you'll just have a more expensive alternative?
Well, we would want to change it over to gas eventually anyway, so we'd have to do the whole heating system and then do it all over again.
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, we have moratoriums in place, and they're there for a reason. I know Jim Clyde has given his opinion to not grant the variance for the moratorium. I am inclined to follow that, because we've done, that's the way we've done in the past, we've been inclined to do that in the past. I don't know, Alex, do you have anything to, I'm sorry, I can open up the board if anybody has it, Alex, I was going to go to you first, so give you that option.
I thought I had read in here something about federal law. Now, is the work mandated by state or federal law? And it says yes, and I'm curious as to what that is.
No, it's not.
Okay.
And it says, but you did check, yes, there is no other reasonable means of service?
Yeah, I guess to me and my husband, it's not reasonable to put in a whole new oil system and then rip it all out and put in a gas system that's not financially...
Right, if you were to put in a gas system, if you put in an oil system, that's a functioning system, so to rip out a functioning system and put in a gas system later, that's your option. That's not required.
Right, it is. It's a lot more expensive.
But it's not, but I'm just going to say it's not required.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
Have you done the analysis on the cost difference between the two?
I haven't.
Did you?
No, I mean, we've, you know, we've had people come before us before, and, you know, they were like six months away, I believe was the last one, and we, you know, went by the recommendation of the highway, so I'm inclined to go with the recommendation of the highways you're down.
Yeah. And I am too, I mean, it's, we had, that's a moratorium, that's the rule, and it says, except in cases of emergency repairs to utilities, that's what the policy states, so that's the way I'm going to, I don't know if you want to go to a motion, or I don't know if you want to give me any other final comments, but...
I mean, as of right now, there's only two rooms of the whole house, so I'm very...
And this is something you just bought, right? You're just moving into it?
Bought it in December, but we just moved in because it doesn't have heat.
Right, yeah, okay. Okay. I'll send it, you take a motion. Well, you can give us a memo, I don't know if you want to hear, anything else to add on that? No? Okay.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote not to disapprove the request of the waiver Selectment Regulations and Policy, Section 7.4, Street Opening Permit, Subsection 8.1, which prohibits the cutting of surface road services five years old or newer, except in cases of emergency repairs to utilities, for installation of new gas line on the 135 Goldsmith Street.
Period. That's it?
Period.
Okay. Motion been made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, good luck.
Sorry.
All right. At...
I would hope that maybe we can look at this procedure in the future so that we can identify, there was some confusion in here about federal law and that sort of thing. I think what we have to identify is the level of hardship, and people should be encouraged to do a financial analysis before they come to us.
Yeah, I think that's what happened on the last one, too. They made a point, but there was nothing agreed.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I think the other thing...
I understand, but we need hard numbers and real, you know, factual things in front of us in order to make a decision.
I think, Jim, another thing we talked about, I don't know how far you've gotten with this, is when we're getting ready to pave, I think, aren't we trying to notify people of the moratorium before we go ahead and pave? So, you know, like for the ones like Neshoba Road and New Estate, we're letting them know ahead of time, yeah, so any work to be done doing that, yeah. So hopefully we can avoid this, I mean, you might not be able to avoid it for someone.
They bought the house now, so they would have known.
Yeah.
They'll buy it.
Okay, so...
Just a quick question for Jim. Is there a way that this can be done without damaging the roads? Is there a preferred method that isn't used or that's out there that...
Because you have to dig to the gas main, and they have to tap it and pipe it.
And those patches never work out well, so...
That's why we, you know, we're not the only town that knows that there's, you know, plenty of towns that have the moratorium, and that's just the reason, if you look at the roads and all the bumps, they're all utility cuts, most of them.
And you look at something, and I think five years is pretty short, too. Yeah, it could be justification, justification would go longer. Okay?
Thank you.
Nothing else to move on? All right, we have public hearings, so we have to wait till the timeline these...
You could approve the election warrant.
Which one?
A.
All right, so I have... And then Diane can get on with it.
Okay, so we have the warrant here that needs to be voted on by the selectmen to execute it, and...
You ready?
You ready?
Any questions? Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to execute the warrant for the annual town election to be held on Saturday, May 10th, 2014, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Charles Forbes Keg Gymnasium, Littleton Middle School, 55 Russell Street, and to direct the constable to post said warrant forthwith.
The motion should say 8:00 a.m., I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
You wrote what, you said what's printed there, but it should say, but...
Oh, okay.
So it would be May 10th, Saturday, May 10th, 2014, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in
the Charles Forbes Keg Gymnasium, Littleton Middle School, 55 Russell Street, and to direct the constable to post warrant said forthwith.
Second.
Motion been made in second to execute the May 10th Annual Town Election Warrant. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Do you want to sign that? We can give it to...
Thank you. You weren't even here anyway, so you won't be able to hold on it. Just Alex and I will be voting. So I'd make a motion, any issues on the, any issues on the minutes, Alex?
On which one?
On the minutes.
March 20th. Can you approve those with, do you still need a form of the entire board, or is it just those present?
Well, you need to have, well, no, we can't approve this.
We're still two out of the three.
That were present.
That were present.
Well, you still have one more meeting when you could have...
That's fine.
This group sign it. If, after the election, believe me...
No, no, we're talking about the minutes.
No, no, I know that.
Oh, okay.
But I'm saying, let's say you didn't get to them tonight, and then after the election, after the election, believe me, the new board has the authority to approve them.
All right.
Ted, you were there, you just showed up late. You entered the executive session at 7:45.
Oh.
I don't know if that's...
That's right, no, I, okay, so I did come in at 7:45. Okay, so I was for most of it, okay, all right. So did you finish your motion?
I did not.
Okay, well, let's go ahead.
All right.
There you go.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve its minutes of Monday, March 24, 2014.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. No, about...
7:15.
7:15, yeah, well, you're on top of things today. All right. 7:15, public hearing for Concord Oil Company. Board of Selectmen, public hearing for common victorial license application, Concord Oil Company, DBA Shell Travel Plaza, 25 King Street, Littleton, Massachusetts. The Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, April 14th, 2014, at 7:15 p.m. in Room 103 of the Town Office Building, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Massachusetts, to consider the application for a common victorial license as requested by Concord Oil Company, DBA Shell Travel Plaza, 25 King Street, Littleton, Massachusetts, 01460, identified on assessor's map, U-41, parcel 50. Comments thereon may be submitted in writing to the Selectmen Town Administrator's Office, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Massachusetts, 01460, by noon on Friday, April 11th, 2014, or in person at the hearing. All interested parties are invited to attend. Ted P. Doucette, Chairman, Board of Selectmen, and this was advertised on April 10th in Littleton, Massachusetts. And Keith, was there any letters received in, or comments on this, other than the staff that we seen?
We received no letters from the public.
Okay, and everything's in order as far as it's recommended by the Deputy Chief Matt King, and the taxes have been paid, so it's all...
It's in order from the State Department.
Okay. Yes, man, did you have something to say?
Yes, I'm with Bummer.
Okay.
And I just had two questions.
Okay, a name and address for the record, please.
Sure thing. Anne Lawrence.
Okay.
18 Harwood Avenue.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, what do you...
Okay, my first question is, is this a change from what is a present usage in any, is it a change in any way?
Oh, please, okay, right, it's a common license, right?
It's an existence.
It's an existing license.
Yeah.
So there's no change?
Nope.
Okay. My question.
Okay.
Can I have the answers?
Thanks, both, okay.
Thank you.
Go on.
Turnkey? Make a motion to close the hearing.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Subsection 6, to approve the application for Concord Oil Company, DBA Shell Travel Plaza, for common particular license for premise at 25 King Street, Littleton.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So...
The hearing's at 7:20.
We can do the library.
They're probably coming in.
The director's not here.
If we do the library, can we tell them?
Yeah, we'll email.
Get in touch with them?
He'll take yes for an answer.
He'll take yes for an answer, yeah.
Same ones.
Yeah, I know, we got, just got three minutes to go. So we're moving on to then 8B, and that is a no-impact, non-benefit eligible hiring. There's no impact to the budget?
That's right, and this is the last iteration of the impact of some promotions from within, and this is the remaining position, which would be filled six hours a week, grade three be filled from outside.
Okay.
Budget neutral, actually save a little money.
Okay. Ready? Anything, any discussion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the library director's request under the staffing vacancy review policy to fill a non-benefit eligible six-hour-per-week grade-three position of library assistant.
Second. Motion been made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So efficient without Joe here.
Joe, did you hear that?
Yeah, he's...
I know he's watching.
He's sitting home watching, yeah. All right. Time being 7:20, we have a public hearing for common victorial license. All right, and this is also for Concord Oil Company, DBA Sitgo, at 256 Air Road, Littleton, Massachusetts. The Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, April 14th, 2014, at 7:20 p.m. in Room 103 of the Town Offices Building, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Massachusetts, to consider the application for a common victorial license as requested by Concord Oil Company, DBA Sitgo, 256 Air Road, Littleton, Massachusetts, 01460, identified on assessor's map, U-45, parcel 7B. Comments thereon may be submitted in writing to the Selectmen Town Administrator's Office, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Massachusetts, 01460, by noon on Friday, April 11th, 2014, or in person at the hearing. All interested parties are invited to attend. Keith, can I assume this is the same, where there were no comments received, and do you have all the same recommendations from staff?
That's correct.
Okay. So there's no objections? Is there anybody wishing to comment on this? No applicants on here?
Move to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing?
I'm making a motion to close.
No, there isn't a motion.
Oh, there is, sorry.
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Subsection 6, to approve the application of Concord Oil Doing Business as Sitgo for common particular license for the premises at 256 Air Road, Littleton.
Second. Motion been made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Let's see, so the next thing is 7:30?
Next hearing's at 7:30, and we won't see Attorney DeShane, because we are rescheduling his hearing for...
Oh, you're here for Concord, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
He's not here for the 7:30 hearing.
Oh, okay.
Because we're going to be voting to continue it for the next meeting, when we, when you'll have four members tomorrow.
Right, right. 8C, is there something we can...
You can.
So this is another of the special municipal employee designation?
Yeah, this I thought is the last, felt like, you know, Karnak with the last envelope.
Yeah, right.
People applaud that this, from the staff's review, this is the last determination that the Board of Selectmen is being asked to make under the conflict of interest law to deal with current matters that we have. This one involves the LCTV Advisory Committee, which, which the recommendation is to designate, have you designate them as special municipal employees. The committee has requested that designation, that designation together with the further approval of a, of an exemption for Millie McGovern, the application which you have, those actions would continue to allow Millie to serve on the LCAT, LCTV Advisory Committee, along with all of her other unpaid activities, so...
Very active.
I wouldn't, I'm putting it out there. So, okay.
So you said this is the last of them? This is the last in, that I'm aware of, that the HR department will be bringing forward. I do not believe that we have any more that will be coming forward, and if we did, it would only be because of new, certain new circumstances.
Sure.
So how are we monitoring this? Is it just, we need to get the information out to people so they understand that they're in compliance or not in compliance, and little things like this, this is just a little thing.
We are monitoring it through the payroll process, so any time that there's an employee hired or somebody takes a different position, there's a review process. There is still, you know, the elected process that doesn't really take into HR, so those, we're trying to monitor, but it's not, it's outside of our purview per se, but we are monitoring all the payroll changes.
I suppose one thing that we could do that we haven't thought about yet, since if there was something new that would come up, it would come up because someone not on the radar screen is being appointed to a new town board. And I suppose we could revise the application form, the town board application form to at least flag, is there, you know, do you serve on another town committee, do you have another, you know, some kind of question, questioning?
Good idea.
That would, that would give us an early warning, so that would, that would come up before you make the appointment rather than after, so we'll do that. It is far better to catch it before it's gone on for years. And do we ever go back and look at these, and, you know, faces change? I mean, we have to, we have to designate the position and not the person, but often we come across a person who is, it's the person who causes us to change the designation of the position, and from time to time, maybe we ought to review these and see if something's... Yeah, you could do that. There is a comprehensive list of all the, of all the designations that have been made that are attached to this agenda item, and we do regularly update that. Each time you vote, we'll make an update, and certainly periodically review.
I mean, we had debate about just making all the committees across the town and kind of went by the wayside to designate them, so we don't have to go through this individual process by process, but six of one, half dozen of the other, it's more work for the HR people and...
Well, we have the process in place now that we're monitoring all of the additions and subtractions to the employee base, and we can certainly...
I think if we, if we add the town, if we have the town board application form flagged and information, then that would be a way for us to deal with it, with new committee members.
Ready? Anything else, Alex?
Yeah, just an interesting question. What kind of school official is Millie?
Oh, she's the, no, sports official, you mean?
Yeah.
She does the ticket-taking at the games.
Oh, okay. I thought she might have been a whistleblower. I wouldn't argue with her in that case.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Subsection 1, to designate the members of the LCTV Advisory Committee as special municipal employees, and further to approve the request of the LCTV Advisory Committee member Mildred McGovern for an exemption under Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Subsection 20D.
Second. The motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we still got some time here. Do you want to go through the warrant article recommendations and assignments?
It's done.
I just came on. Let's see, oh, we got the assignments to... Oh, I don't think this, the only thing we have is cap plan, and everything else, somebody else is coming in for, right?
We'll have to wait a couple of minutes. Yeah.
I'd set this up.
What's that?
We need to wait a couple of minutes.
Kirby, can you put up the test pattern?
I used to get up in the morning and get to turn on the last couple of minutes of test pattern so I could watch the news, back in my bomber days.
We had the one, we had, we had that long intermission for a while back. Did we finish up early? We had a public hearing in like 45 minutes. A couple meetings ago, we had to...
I think we had a smoke break, didn't we?
Yeah.
Excuse me? All right. Oh, you know, this could, you can talk about, did we get correspondence? I think we, I actually have one that should be written to the record. Can we find it?
So it looks like Joe's going to be very busy at town meetings.
That's what I was saying, yeah. That's why I thought we could rip through it very quickly.
I already made my checks. Joe Knox, Joe Knox, Joe Knox, Joe Knox. Boy, he's going to be a busy guy.
I only have one, I actually want to request them. We can give Joe Knox a rest. Now, we haven't seen Jerry Delpiore at meetings recently, but he sent an email in with just some very timely comments about the medical marijuana bylaw that I've shared with the planning board, but I think you might like to see it in the minute we have. He says, "I'm glad the town is taking a proactive position on this matter. It looks like it was a well-thought-out bylaw that protects the town. I'm sure that it was a joint effort on the part of the various boards, and it looks like they were able to weed out any potential problems. I hope that when we get the straight dope on this at town meeting, and that there's no possibility it can go up in smoke after being reviewed by a high court."
You know, he doesn't really have much of a, so much of a sense of humor when he comes in, but I just, I couldn't top it.
He almost burst that way off. And I thought about it for quite a while, you know.
All right. Time being 7:30, we will, we have a continued public hearing for the Shoba Valley Ski Area Two Park Facility, and this is a meeting that was continued from March 10th till this time, and we believe they're not quite ready yet, up and still getting some plans in.
Yeah, the main, yeah, the main issue on that one is that because it's a special permit granted under the zoning bylaw, that approval requires four members of the special permit granting authority to approve it, and since we knew with Joe's absence tonight that you'd only have three, that, that you wouldn't be able to act upon it, so with the, with the indulgence of the applicant's attorney, we agreed that the board should continue the hearing until two weeks from tonight, the 28th, when you'll have four members, and he will, he will put on the record of that meeting any additional information he has. He's also aware that, since that's the last regular meeting of the sitting board, that he, that, you know, it's that night is when he needs to be ready with whatever information you need to make your decision, so...
Okay.
Point of order, we got to open and close it, right?
Well, it's already been continued, so how do we open this?
Yeah, you continue to tonight, so you could, I'd say just vote to continue it until the next night. it until next night.
And we gotta say, it has to be a set date and time. Just one quick comment about this. I did have some comments on the plans last time they were in, so I offered to have them send those to me, just so I could give them any type of feedback. I don't know if anybody else has any other feedback on them, but I just, a couple things, you know, my line of work, I could let them know where else I think should be on there. And as long as the board's okay with that.
Did you, have you actually seen a set of plans?
I haven't seen the plans yet. They said their engineer would send them to me. It was just a couple of comments, I just wanted to make sure it was cleared up.
Yeah, I think that was, there was a couple of places where I wasn't sure where the lines were and stuff like that, and that's the kind of thing you're gonna.
Yeah, I mean, we can send it to you too, by all means, but, yeah, so.
I'm okay with it, I'm not an engineer. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote as special permit granting authority under zoning bylaw, subsection 173-26, to continue until Monday, April twenty-eight, twenty-fourteen, at seven thirty PM, the public hearing on the application of the Shoba Valley Ski Area to amend the extensive recreation special permit.
Motion made in second to extend the public hearing for the Shoba Valley Ski Area. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Yeah, that's one more thing, oh, I guess.
And was it a three-o vote on the special municipal?
Yes. I think we can go on to the warrant article recommendations assignments. That's the only thing that's not really waiting for anybody else, right? Is there some way for any other reports?
Yeah, we can, we can do that if we set.
Now, we have some that are already recommended and supported, is that correct? Have we been shipping those off?
Yes, yes, you have.
And is that?
It's more, it's more or less as reported in the draft of the town meeting report that you have, but I have to say that the report is actually written as though it were going to the printer tomorrow. So, there may be some things that we need to have you vote on tonight in order to have the document reflect that. And just starting with the special town meeting, and it's, this is actually some information that Bonnie just shared for tonight, that we have, and this is not in your written packet, but it's on the screen, that there are, there's a proposed transfer under special town meeting, Article Two, that's proposed, thirty-five thousand dollars, to go from insurance to legal, to, to, for an adjusted budget of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, which is about what we've been spending.
It's the same transfer we did last year, too. So, it's actually, it's a lot more.
So, this would, so this Bonnie indicates is the only transfer that we'd be bringing to the special town meeting, and FinCom will be voting on the, on the twenty-ninth. They've been briefed on it, but they will have a vote on it at their next meeting. But we'd like to include this motion.
Have we talked to town council to see if that's accurate? I mean, I know there's been some extra expenses this year, or is it all just come in and?
He's gonna provide an update. I just reminded him that I needed to give that to him next week. We may well exceed this, but this is a number that I can be comfortable on right now.
Okay.
But it may be more.
So, you do work with them?
Okay.
So, no prior bills?
No prior bills?
No prior bills, under Article.
Nice. Well, Joe, you just done, you got rid of one.
Right. So, do we want to vote the special town meeting first, or you want to do them together?
Let's do special town meeting first.
Okay.
Please?
Sure, go ahead.
So, there's no recommendation on Article One, but we need a motion to recommend Article Two. You've already voted to recommend Article Three.
Oh, okay, we have three, great.
And on Article Four, there's no motion yet because the water commissioners are still working on it.
Okay.
So, just the Article Two is favorable votes.
And then, okay, then the motion is it?
Move to recommend Article Two of the special town meeting.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. So, then we're gonna go, all right, do we want to assign these now, too?
I wanna just go and prove them all first.
Sure, okay, all right.
Sign them all, Joe.
All right. So, do we have, Keith, I'm not seeing where we have a list of what's been approved or recommended already.
Yeah, as if we, as we go through the, as we go through the booklet, yeah, I don't, I don't have a, a list that has which ones, it's embedded in the recommendations here. So, Article, Articles One, Two, Three are routine articles, which I believe that you've already voted to support. If not, you can take that, but you could take the confirming vote tonight. Article Four, you need to take a vote on tonight because there's two numbers that have changed since you last reviewed the operating budget. And, and we know that you haven't adopted a vote on the operating budget yet, pending, working it out. So, the two, the two new numbers for tonight are that on, that the Finance Committee had voted at a, at a recent meeting to, to increase the Elder and Human Services budget by thirteen?
Thirteen thousand forty dollars.
Okay. Thirteen oh-four oh, to fund those ten additional hours for the outreach coordinator that the Council on Aging had been here to talk to us about. So, FinCom has already voted to include that in their recommendation. And by the way, the way, the way the, our town bylaw works, it's the, the budget as presented in, in this article is the Finance Committee's budget. As a practical matter, though, so that we don't have competing numbers on the floor, we strive very hard to make sure that the set of numbers we're bringing to voters represents what FinCom, Selectman, and School Committee have, have agreed to. So, so we ought to discuss that, that thirteen thousand. The other number is the one that we were at the, the School Committee's meeting a week or so ago for its appropriation of sixteen-point-seven million dollars. So, with that, all the other numbers you'd seen before, those are the final ones that would, that we're looking forward to bringing to town meeting. As Bonnie's budget update tells us, that leaves a projected operating deficit right now at ninety-five thousand seven hundred dollars, as of today. And that's frankly about where we were a year ago at town meeting, where, where we went into the May town meeting about ninety.
Ninety-seven.
Yeah, out of balance. That number was balanced by the time we got to the, to the November Fall Town Meeting, for which we, after which we could set the tax rate. And, and it's the final state aid figures, it's the final.
New growth and old resources.
And once those numbers are finalized, that will, would, that would either close the deficit by that act, or if there's something left to cut, that we would, we could cut it at the, at the Fall Town Meeting. But Bonnie can, why don't you share with us your level of comfort on?
I'm extremely confident that we'll close the deficit that we have right now. It's just a matter of what accounts will change. Is it going to be, you know, forty thousand from new growth and sixty thousand from state aid or vice versa? But I'm, I'm very confident in the fact that we'll close it, or would not recommend support at this level.
Would it, would it House One come in then?
It was about, I think that the higher version came in at about forty thousand dollars higher than what we have projected currently. We're also, you know, getting some indication that, you know, the new growth might be a little bit more than what I have in there right now at the, at the six-hundred thousand, but we're finalizing those numbers.
You know where the Senate, where the Senate is, the Senate has a compact version.
Yeah.
It's in House Ways and Means right now.
Yeah. We have two more versions to go.
Well, we're looking for the Senate, the Senate has a compact version.
No.
So, this is something new, and about going to, into annual town meeting unbalanced at the last, last year and this year. Is, is this something because of cherry sheets and state aid and everything, coming in later and later every year?
Well, it's, it's something that a lot of communities do go in unbalanced in May, but you, you want to go in with a comfort level that you're gonna close it, it's just a matter of what account are you gonna, what accounts are gonna change?
Yes.
You know, I could, I could project, you know, an increase in state aid, but it might come through that it's new growth in the end.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, I am confident that we're gonna get it one way or the other, it's just a matter of which bucket is gonna change.
No, 'cause I just said, I don't, I don't like going in unbalanced, and by, with your confidence, I'll take that recommendation. I just wonder, I don't recall doing this that much in the past, and I don't, I think we should probably try to get away from the practice. I just didn't know why it was happening.
And layers here, last year was the first time.
Yeah, yeah. And why, why is that happening now all of a sudden? Is it because we're not?
It's, it's because of the uncertainty of where state aid's gonna come in at, primarily, and the lengthness.
And because Bonnie's revenue estimates are so conservative, and that, and, which is how we like it.
Right.
That, you know, we under, we never overestimate the amount of the revenues until you can actually count them, and that, you know, and there's a high level of confidence that you're gonna come in at the, at the higher levels than, than what is, what a conservative estimate currently accounts for, so.
I wonder if it's also our budget is just growing faster. I mean, if we had, if our budget was ninety-five thousand dollars less, then we'd be going in balanced, right? So, I mean, is, is our spending, I mean, a lot of it's not, it's out of our control lead, we're trying to do our best to control spending. But I mean, I think that's probably an issue, too.
Yeah, I think the town's done a very good job, and the boards, the boards, all of boards involved have done a very good job of trying to manage the, the increases in spending. The department increases have been very targeted and reviewed by all. You know, the health insurance stuff, you know, that, that's gonna increase faster than, than two and a half percent, that's, that's always a factor. We monitor that as closely as we can, and, and, you know, we've seen some modest increases in the last few years, but, you know, I think the town does, you know, do a very good job of trying to manage the personal costs.
Now, is there anything in the financial policies that speaks to the going into town meeting with a projected deficit?
There is nothing in the policies that, that state. We do have to have our budget balanced by the time we set our tax rate in November, December, and that, that's a requirement of Mass. General.
And that's a requirement. When we get to setting a tax rate, it has to be balanced at that point. So, should that be in consideration for the, for the team that's doing financial policies?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to have it qualified in the policy.
I mean.
Maybe there's a, there's a threshold for pain or something, you know.
This is fairly new practice. The question is, is it something we want to continue or, or curb or what? So, I think maybe the people that are looking at financial policies could help us with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add a couple of points. I was not at the FinCom meeting, I was, you know, a couple weeks ago when the specific issue of the human services budget came in. But at last week's meeting, when FinCom did vote its recommendation, I, I think we were under the impression, or at least I was, that we were acting on something that there was already agreement on with the Selectmen, so I, you know, apologize if there's any misunderstanding there. Our, our intent is to, you know, our intent was to do things by consensus, always has been, so.
Yeah, there were some offline conversations about that, about, you know, about some of the numbers and how we, you know, we had talked, I was gonna wait till we got down to those to talk about. But I think that, you know, we, we had some conversations, Bonnie and I were talking, you and I were talking about kind of the, the process that we're trying to follow, and, you know, I think that we got some item, issues aired out, and, you know, there's no reason to go ahead and, you know, air out any more dirty laundry, but I think, you know, I think the thing is that we want, this board wants to do next time is continue the communication, and when there are priorities requested by FinCom is to set them. And then, you know, for FinCom, you know, before making a recommendation that doesn't jive with the Selectmen's recommendations or their votes, they just talk about it offline first and, and try to make sure that we're just, we're staying together the whole time, so.
I agree with you on that.
Yeah.
You know, as I say, that was what we thought we were doing, at least that's what I thought I was doing in chairing last week's meeting. I hope we don't end up in any significant disagreement on that point.
We'll see, but I think, you know, the important thing is that we talked about the process and the conversation, and, you know, so.
Yeah, the process, I'll tell you this, this, to follow up in the discussion you were just having on entering in a deficit, it was new, it was, first I learned that we were even able to do it last year when we entered into it, and I, I would agree with Alex's point that we should probably get that into policy, and my personal preference would be that we discourage that. I mean, it, it can be, you know, if we have spending that we expect there'll be funding for, in the context of a thirty-odd million dollar budget, you can find something that you can keep in abeyance to be funded at the Fall Special when you know you have the money, rather than creating, I think, you know, this is personal, not a board position, personally, just the, of a bad message to send the town that we're willing to go in with an operating deficit. I don't think it really means anything this year. I believe everything Bonnie has said in terms of the projections, I think just, there's gotta be a way to structure it, so we come in clean, and the town that tunes in on the budget once or twice a year sees a balanced budget at the bottom of the page, and there's some value to that. So, I, I think that's a good topic to follow up on.
No, I agree.
I agree as well. And, you know, I've said it a couple times, that, you know, I don't, I don't like it, we're okay this year, it seems to be a sign of the times that we don't have another option, but maybe it is a better option, you know, just to have an extra safety valve in there to, you know, in case the numbers don't come in where we expect it someday, you know, it could happen. And, you know, we don't want to be getting, making recommendations going in unbalanced so high that, you know, we don't have the level of confidence that we do today, so.
To Paul's point, I know we're, I, I believe in the recent past we've done that, in so much as to say, okay, you know, the funding level can be this, only if this, the, the revenues come in better, the cherry sheet comes in better. And I think there are some line items you can absolutely put in abeyance, whether it be OPEB or something else that's, you know, it's always good to pay, but, you know, we, we decide as a board that departmental budgets are good, we want level services, or in some cases, you know, we need some extra services or extra hours. And we, we look into the numerous lines and say, okay, we're gonna take this, this, and this, and hold it in abeyance until we get the final number, so. And that's something that won't impact the services of the, of the town government.
I think that, that, you know, one of the points that needs to be said here is, is part of this is, is Bonnie's strategy, and Keith hit the nail on the head with that. She's not going to give us numbers that we aren't going to achieve easily. And that's a very good way to have it, because the other way is very bad. If we have projections and we fall short, then, then we're, we're in a much worse situation because we've told a bunch of people that their budgets are approved and stuff like that, and we go, essentially, we go back to the drawing board. So, you know, this isn't a criticism of the, the way you're doing it, I think it's something new for us, that we have to figure out how to, how we want to address that. But I'd much rather know that we will at least be able to do this, and we should be able to close that gap, than, than to have September come and say, oh, by the way, you know, we're, we're ninety thousand dollars short that I didn't think we were gonna be, so.
I, I am absolutely comfortable in addressing it in the policy, I think it's a great idea. I think it would also give me a, a comfort level in that I'm, I'm not held to the fire should state aid come in higher and, you know, another bucket come in lower, that we look at the whole picture, and, and then I'd be more comfortable in my forecasting, so.
I guess one of the contingencies we have to think about is what's gonna happen in the, in the employment contracts.
So, let's, seven forty-five, we have it on here for talk about operating budget and cap plan. So, we can get into it. The, the two numbers, like we said, were the, the COA additional request and then the School Department. I think we're all in agreement with the, on board with the School Department. We had a joint meeting last week, and we all seemed to be in agreement with that, with that number. Stop me if I'm wrong. But the other number was the thirteen thousand forty dollars for the COA. I think my, you know, we talked about it a little bit, and again, I don't want to air too much dirty laundry, the Selectmen hadn't made a motion on this yet, so we need to make that motion and basically provide the direction and see if we're in concurrence with the, with the recommendation that was recommended budget. So, right now it's in the recommended budget, the increase is in the recommended budget from FinCom and the one that we have before us today. Correct, Bonnie?
Yes.
So, I guess, you know, it's, it's hard. I understand the need, there's needs in every department. And the Selectmen set out in, at the beginning of the budget cycle and said that we're gonna be level-staffed this year, and that there was gonna be no staffing increases. That message was passed on, and I believe that Keith was a, a gateholder in saying that, no, you, you know, you're not coming to the Selectmen to request change, there was, the COA was very adamant about coming in, and they, they made it past the gatekeeper, and they came in, and they made their, they, they made their point here. At that time, I believe the Selectmen said, let's carry that number and see where it ends up. ends up. I don't think we ever once, I don't think we ever took a formal vote to approve it. I think there's, there could be a dangerous direction that we're going when we set a policy, or a standard, or an expectation, or some sort of guidelines, and then we go ahead and go against those. You know, next year, are people going to look at, you know, this, the?
Next year, everyone is going to have the Council on Aging come in and run interference.
Right, well, you're right. So, next year, are people, you know, are the guidance going to be set, guidelines going to be set, and they're going to say, well, look at what COA did last year. They came in, they made their point, they got their money. And are we going to be back to the point where, you know, the, the goals and the direction that are set by the selectmen, that they're, they're just become useless? And are we going to have people start, I mean, it gets to an extreme case, and maybe it won't get to this, but we have people in fighting and fighting for other people's budgets and things like that. So, I think there's two things to, to look at tonight. Do we want to make that recommendation, and, you know, what are the impacts on it?
I think one of, you know, the finance committee's looked at this, and they've agreed with it. The, you know, the finance department has looked at this, they agree with it. I know a lot about this particular situation. I understand that we have somebody who's working a lot of extra hours. I also know the crackdown that's coming on, whether you can ask somebody to work extra hours without having compensation for that. But, but we're only a small part of this decision. It's one thing if we set priorities and goals, but I don't think we're the last word on all of this. Maybe technically we are. But what carries a lot of weight with me is, you know, the, they came in, they felt strongly enough to make their presentation, it passed muster with both FinCom and the finance department, and that, that carries a lot of weight with me. And I, I don't think that, I, for all the years I've, you know, since I came here as fire chief, there's always been somebody, every year that comes in and says, well, I have, there's a particular need that I have that needs to be addressed, and it's a little bit outside of the, what the guidelines we would like to establish are. And, and it's our job to take those up on a case-by-case basis and make some choices.
It is, and I'm just worried about the repercussions, because down the road, we take them up on a case-by-case basis, I mean, you're going to have everybody come in, but this year, we said we're not going to take them on a case-by-case basis. Everybody comes in, everyone's treated the same. I know COA needs, they made a great case. But had somebody else gotten in before us, had, could they have made such a, you know, case? Could Highway have made just as good a case that would have convinced us to spend another, you know, $15,000 of them? Could, you know, anybody else? Could, you know, IT come in and said, look, I need another so many thousand dollars for this, and we would have been up against it. So, I think you're right that, you know, this is a, you know, this may be a valid point and place to spend it, but I think that the process is kind of went, you know, awry a little bit, and I'm just concerned about going awry. Why set a recommendation and a guidance if we're just going to go back against it? It's kind of like the, the streets policy that we just run up, the no cutting in the streets. Look, we have a policy in place, we're going to follow it, you know, this time.
But under certain circumstances, we might make, vote to allow them.
So, why don't we open it back up and say, okay, everybody come in and make an argument for your mission budget, then? If COA was allowed to come in, why not let everybody? How do you say yes to COA and say no to Park and Rec, and to Highway, and to police, and to fire, and to IT, and, and things like that?
So, so, a couple of points.
Yep.
You had mentioned that no increase in staff. This isn't an increase in staff, it's an increase in hours, so there's no impact as far as insurance or any fringe benefits. I think that, you know, we did have Park and Rec come in and want more money.
That's a good point.
Okay, so, it wasn't just the COA that came in, it was the Park and Rec, and the rest of the departments had, if they had felt strong that they wanted to increase their budget, I think we had the fire department come in and say, look, we want to do more firefighters. If we get this grant, it's going to impact us. The grant didn't come out, so, you know, that, that went by the wayside. I think as far as what the finance committee, what the, the finance team looks at, and the idea of going into this fiscal year with a deficiency and then adding to that deficiency, is the $13,000 part of the 98?
Ninety-five, yes.
Ninety-five?
Yes.
Okay, so, knowing that the, the 13 is part of the, the 95, and, and personally knowing what, having an 88-year-old mother and having to use these services and see the services that are used, and how it benefits all the town people, just not the elderly or not, or seniors, because she, Tina does so much more, and hearing that the, the finance team can, are very confident, I just have a hard time not even, you know, it's, it's such a low impact to anything, it's, 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 you know, it's something that should be done.
The $13,000 is not my issue, it's the process.
I understand that.
Okay, so, I think it's, I think it's a worthwhile cause, and I know it's covered, I'm just trying to be wary of.
We had some other departments come in before us and say, hey, I need.
Yeah.
And we said no. I mean, did we take a, a stance on this? No, we didn't. But I think tonight we can, we can take a stance on it.
On this one, yeah.
On this one, and I'm sure that our, you know, our vote tonight would, would hold with Mr. Knox, too, so, yeah. Pretty confident of that.
So, do we want to vote that item in particular, or do we want to just keep it in the budget and vote that way, or not?
Well, I think if we're, if we're going to vote on the, on the budget moving forward, it's going to include, it's already included in the budget, so it's, follow the incorporate in it, so if we go forward.
Right, right, right.
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Actually, the, the proposed motion under 6A1 would have this board adopt that budget as presented.
Right, so we don't?
As, as recommended by finance committee, requested by the school committee.
Right, I just didn't know if the board wanted to make a, a separate vote to, to actually support that, or is it sufficient to support it as part of the budget?
I'd say it's supported as far as the budget. And I would say, you know, again, the, the, the bid about, or the, the recommendations of the chairman of the finance and Bonnie making some changes or modifying the financial policies, I'm on that group. I think that's something that we can absolutely do, and, you know, get a clearer picture so that there is no guesswork here, so to speak, and we can, we can actually have a concrete policy to look at as we go forward.
Okay.
I think, you know, to your question of whether we should vote on separately, I guess it's whether we think that we're not going to want that money in there, and that would dictate whether we, you know, say we support that piece or don't support that piece. But it sounds to me like, like we pretty much, for the most part, support what they're trying to do.
Yes, yes. I think that I, because it goes against the, I just didn't know if we're something we want to do. I don't think there's anything legal we have to do, I just didn't know if we want to make a clear statement that, yes, we're going to, you know, based on what we heard, we're going to make that recommendation. I don't think we have to. We can just do it as a budget, and.
I think the message is just as clear.
Okay.
If we've had a discussion about it, and then we go ahead and vote the budget as one, one unit.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so, we're ready, so that article, we can make our recommendation tonight?
Well, is there any other discussion on 6A1 as far as the 2015 budget update? Anything else, Bonnie? I know the 16, 7 is all set for the school, that's awesome.
I think that, that's, no, we talked about it.
Okay, sure.
Move that board of selectmen vote to support the proposed budget for fiscal year 2015 as requested by the school department and recommended by the finance committee.
Motion been made and seconded to, to adopt the fiscal 2015 operating budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, now we got to just make our recommendations, starting with?
Next one is Article 5, the Water Enterprise Fund.
Do you have records if these were?
I.
Do we have any?
I don't think it was. I don't think we did.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it was.
We were waiting for the question.
Yeah, I think, I think what we could do is, you could have a, at, at, once, once we go through them all, and we'll have separate votes, you could, you could take a single vote covering all the ones that we're going over.
Okay.
So, which right now are 1, 2, 3.
4 we just did.
Yeah, 4 you did. 5 and 6, the two enterprise funds. The water and Park and Rec. We'll need to have a vote on Article 7, the capital plans, and, and there, the updated information is that all of the projects which you included in that article can be funded within sources that have been identified by, by Bonnie.
Okay.
To include the COA's kitchen.
Yes, including the COA's kitchen. So, all of those can be funded.
So, as in 6A1, do we need a separate budget for that? A separate vote for the cap plan, or is that just?
Yeah, you could take that, you could take that vote, that in 6, in 6A2.
Yeah.
Which would cover Article 7.
Oh, all right. I was seeing double here, okay.
So, I'd like just to make one comment on, on our capital, our capital plans that we do every year, and I don't know how to address it, because I think it could be part of the financial policy. My issue is, every year we're spending between 1.5 and some years, $2.5 million on capital equipment and small projects. We never get a report back as to what gets done, and it's kind of concerning to me. And I'm going to give an example. The shed down on Wickham Ave that we had proposed to be torn down, and money was appropriated probably four years ago now? I, you know.
That's unfamiliar to me, so maybe four years.
So, I'm wondering, you know, where, where is that money? What's going on with that project, and what's happening with it? And I hate to say that the finance team, you know, needs to do more work, but I think the department heads have a responsibility to report back to this board to say, in fiscal year 2015, you as the police department got X amount of money, what was done with it? Another, another one was the second fire, the, the second ambulance. I saw the second ambulance. I said, oh, the, the new ambulance is in. You know, it would be nice for the public to hear that, you know, what we appropriated, you approved as, as the public at, at town meeting for a new ambulance, now we have two brand-new ambulances. I think that if we can get, maybe write it into our financial policy somehow, make it part of our capital improvement plan, maybe twice a year, just come back and tell the board, so the folks in town know that, you know what? We're spending money, it got spent, and it was spent on this project, the project ended up being this amount of money, and it was all good.
I have those reports every month, so I can absolutely.
Perfect.
Include it in the package.
Perfect, yes. It's something, I, I think it's, it may not, you know, twice a year would be nice, you know? Mid, mid-year, it's, it's almost like a mid-year spending, spending plan type of thing, an update on the financial well-being of the town and all the little projects and capital improvements. I shouldn't say little. This is, this year is 1.7?
1.4.
$1.4 million, 1.4, $1,409,562. That's a significant amount of money to spend. I mean, it's great, it's awesome, but I think the, the, the town deserves a report back as to what we did and how we did it and when it was done. So, that being said, I think it's something we can do in the financial policy, so we can set dates, so, you know, we can set it like every six months, or halfway through the fiscal year, here's what we're doing, this is what was done, here's what's, it has to be completed by June 30. Although the money rolls, doesn't it?
It gets uncovered for that particular project.
Right, but it, it rolls from fiscal year to fiscal year, so, unlike my job.
Yeah, there's often the things that are cleaned up with the warrant article money.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, but we don't hear about it. You know, sometimes we just don't hear about it, that things are getting done, or, hey, that something, we, we bid a, a project for, we expected $400,000, it came in at $300,000. Well, that money is available, what do we do with it?
It'd be nice to see it, too. You know, you hear about the, the, the equipment, you know, it'd be nice to see that.
Sure, sure.
You know, so you saw, you know, no one gets to see the ambulance. Well, a few unlucky souls get to see it, I guess, but, you know, it'd be nice to, you know.
Just in the, just in the town, town, though, hey, we got two brand-new vehicles, we have two brand-new ambulances, the, the fire department is 24/7, we have two, two great pieces of equipment, because we all, we always heard when that one ambulance kept breaking down.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it got towed from UMass Medical, it got towed from here, you know, it needs a transmission, something's wrong with the electrical.
Well, Scott wants to bring one to the town meeting. If I got in front of town meeting and everybody can.
Was that the Penguin plunge that they did? All right, so, just if we, we'll, we'll bring it up in our financial meeting, I think it's something that I wanted to bring up.
All right. So, we all?
So, just to affirm, the fire station modular building is for the existing building that's there, right?
It's leased.
And is that a lease for a period of time, or a lease year by year?
It's a monthly, and I think we took, we did a three-year commitment.
So, on that, the motion under 6A2.
Right.
Will work.
Yep.
Move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to, vote to support all capital projects requested in Article 7 of the May 5, 2014 annual town meeting warrant.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded to support the capital improvements plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Okay. You had, you had previously voted to recommend Article 8, community preservation.
Right.
Articles 9 and 10, the two stabilization fund articles, you would need to vote on tonight, and those are in amounts that comply with our policy. $117,000 gets added to the stabilization fund, and $14,000 gets added to the capital stabilization fund. We've already voted to recommend Article 11 for the library project. There's no article, there's no vote yet on Article 12. We're still waiting for the final numbers from the Neshoba Valley Tech.
Is the superintendent going to, or is I?
No, Charlie Ellis said that he would handle it. He told FinCom he'd handle it, so we can have him in at our next meeting on the, two weeks from tonight. Let's see, and we would need votes also on 13.
We need votes on that, or you did that?
14, 15. I think you may have already done it, but.
If we do it again, it's just a confirming vote.
13, 14, 15. 16 as well, the $1 million for roadway borrowing. So, I, I think that in the zoning articles, that you would want to take a position in, in favor of Article 17. You did take a position on the moratorium, and have been involved with the planning board and the board of health on medical marijuana. So, if you would like to take a, a position on that, I think it would be well to have the board vote to support that Article 17. Accessory dwelling, you may not have an opinion as a board, you haven't been involved in that, in that one. Planning board has voted to support that one, Article 18. Flood insurance rate maps, the last time around, you voted to support that. It's almost a financial matter, because the, we want to make sure that we continue to be eligible for the flood, to have Littleton be eligible for the flood insurance program. Article 20, Long Lake.
And just, just when, going back to 18, there, there were no significant changes as it was anyways, with these new MEMA maps, correct?
That, yeah, in Article 19, yeah, the, the maps are the same as the draft maps we saw about a year ago.
Okay. 19, I'm sorry, I said 18.
In Article 20, the Long Lake Park Lot Consolidation, you had, you had already[1696.88] In Article 20, the Long Lake Park Lot Consolidation, you had, you had already approved it, approved that. And then the remainder are, let's see, we have.
Did those already?
Some routine, you have Article 21, 22, 23 are routine. Article 24, personnel bylaw amendments, you voted to approve. As you did Article 25, the veterans preference bylaw. So.
We did 21 too, right? 21, 22, 23? We, we've already done them?
I believe, yes. It's my record that you have. So what, if, so if you wanted to take a vote tonight, it would be on Articles 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 9, 10, 13, 14, 15, 16.
All right, 10, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17.
Those will be the money, those are the financial articles. Then it would be my recommendation that you vote to support Articles 17 and 19 of the zoning.
Okay. And the special town meetings, 2, 3, and 4. No.
Special town meeting, just Article 2 tonight.
All right. So is, some of these are routine. Is there any discussion on 17 and 19, the zoning bylaws?
We had a discussion with the planning board.
I thought they did a great job in coming up with a, with a, an overlay district which is rather limited. It's, it's shown here. It in fact is, involves less area than it, than their original proposal did. They had included industrial A and B and they took out, took out one class. They also took out any of the property in the, sort of the, in the southernmost portion of town. So.
Looks defensible. Let's see if it'll stand up. All right. So that one looks good. And then 18, do we have any? Do we want it? Do we want to take one on that or?
I remember at one of the planning board meetings I was at, but.
Yeah, no opinion on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have to take an opinion on that.
And then 19, you said is a, like almost a housekeeping?
Yeah, 19, 19 is to keep us eligible for the flood insurance program. And that's an important goal to be on the record.
So 13.
I thought we did vote that though.
14.
We, we wanted to wait till they had had their hearings.
Six, nine, 10. Just trying to make sure we don't have any. Okay.
Ready?
Yep. Just a motion to support, right?
Yep. Move that the board of selectmen vote to support the following articles in the May 5th, 2014 special town meeting warrants and, uh, meeting warrants and directed the preparation of the motions to be moved and seconded by said board. Special town meeting Article 2, 2014 line item transfers.
One at a time?
We'll do the special town meeting. The next one's going to be.
Seconded. Okay, seconded, all right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant, um, vote to support the following articles in the May 5th, 2014 annual town meeting warrants and directed the preparation of the motions to be moved and seconded by said board. Article one, town officers. Article two, annual report. Article three, 2015 fiscal year 2015 revolving funds. Article four, 2015 operating budget. Article five, water enterprise fund, uh, operating budget. Article seven, 2015 fiscal year 2015 capital items from available funds. Article nine.
You want to add number six in there too? For the parking lot.
Sorry. Okay. Article six, fiscal year 2015 Park and Recreation Commission Enterprise Fund Operating Budget. Article nine, stabilization fund. Article 10, capital stabilization fund. Article 13, M.H. Kimball Trust School Grants Funds. Article 14, senior work program. Article 15, use of Chapter 90 MassDOT Funds. Article 16, supplemental borrowing roadway improvements plan. Article 17, zoning bylaw amendment, medical marijuana. Article 19, zoning flood insurance rate maps.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Now let's go give them all to Joe.
Yeah. All right. Special town meeting. Line item transfers.
I'll take two.
Got two. Sustained water management initiative. That's going to be all Savas anyway, but.
Yeah.
So no one on that? All right. And the water betterment, that's him too. Okay. So on annual town meeting, um, town officers, one. All right, I'll go. Town report? Joe? Revolving funds.
So it begins.
Revolving funds?
I'll take revolving funds.
All right. Operating budget. I'll go on that. Uh, let's see. Water enterprise fund operating budget. Another Savas, do we need to take anything on that? Operating budget, wait, did I skip one? Revolving funds?
No, I got it.
No, got that.
All right. All right. And I got budget? All right. Do we need a water enterprise?
No.
No. Parking rec?
Alex?
I'm taking.
You'll take parking rec? Cap plan?
I'll take it.
That's a lot of projects.
Yeah.
You want to divide them up?
I want to divide them up.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. I was gonna, I thought I was going to be one and done.
Okay. All right. So then police?
I'll take police and fire.
Police. Fire.
I'll do the highway.
All right. Schools. Joe?
Yep.
Distillations and infrastructure?
I'll take that when I was in that group.
You were in that group? Okay.
Other?
Other? Joe?
Joe?
All right. So then it gets.
I hope you're watching, Joe.
Stabilization fund.
I hope he's not. We're, we're covering you.
Stabilization fund. I'll go. I'll take the cap for stabilization fund as well.
What, community preservation?
Yeah, what about community preservation?
Oh, I thought I was thinking, oh, I saw that as other.
No.
Okay.
It's Article eight.
Oh. I'll defer from, I, I'll defer from eight. I.
What'd you say? You wanted Alex?
You want me to do it?
Did someone say Joe?
You have it. Joe, you got the last one.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Who's got eight?
I thought Alex said something.
Eight, community preservation? Wait a minute.
I'll do it.
Oh, that's a separate one. All right, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah.
They better be there to back me up.
Yeah. All right.
Now stabilization.
Stabilizations, I'll take those two. Library design and planning project.
I'll take that.
All right.
Actually, Joe wants that one. You told me.
Does he?
What was the staple?
Nine and 10?
Oh, nine and 10, I'm sorry. Libraries, Joe.
Libraries, Joe. Neshoba Valley Tech High School Roof Repair. I'll go. Because that's going to be, that's going to be almost a handoff, right? Kimball Grant Funds, that's, these are all going to go under the consent agenda, but.
Yeah, Joe. No, I'll take it. Senior work, I'll take senior work, Joe.
Chapter 90.
Chapter 90.
That's an easy one too. I'll take that one.
Supplemental borrowing roadway improvement plans. I did that one last year.
Got some heavy lifting.
Yeah.
I'll take that. Kick me on the way out.
It's a million dollars.
Kick me on the way out. Zoning bylaw, medical marijuana? Anybody?
So.
Looking for experience, I think.
Seventeen? Anybody?
Alex is, I got one, for goodness sakes. Come on, Alex, speak up here. I got the veterans. The last article.
Yeah, the only other one I want is the personal bylaw amendments.
Well, you're going to get another bylaw amendment then. Medical marijuana? Accessory, uh, Joe shouldn't take accessory.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, you can take.
It's a twofer.
Twenty-three and twenty-four. Alex, you got a personal exemption amounts and.
Is that a refund?
Personal bylaw amendments.
Joint problems.
Yeah. Medical marijuana, all right. Alex, medical marijuana? All right. Bylaw? Accessory dwellings?
I know nothing about it.
I think that's a Joe.
Uh, well, Joe has an accessory dwelling, so I don't know if he should. Actually, he'll be an expert on it, right? Flood insurance rate maps. All right. Joe? Long Lake consolidation. I get that one. I'll take it. Okay. Borrowing authorization, 21.
Those next three are all routine.
All routine?
Chairman can take them and he won't.
Oh, he's saying, all right. It's hard with only four. Geez, seems like we're getting so many more. All right. You got those, Keith? I got them noted down here, but I rely on your.
I'll double check.
Yeah.
With Jen tomorrow and then we'll both be watching tonight.
So we're going to do this similar as we've done in the past couple of meetings. I think the response has been good where the, the assigned selectman does introduce it rather than the.
Yes.
I think that's been working well. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
With that, right?
Did everybody get a chance to look at the voter information booklet?
No, I haven't, I haven't looked through it too much. I assume.
It's fairly similar to last year, just some minor modifications, but it's, it's going to be going to the printer tomorrow.
Right. Right. So there's no changes to that. All right. Anybody else?
Financial audit.
Oh, financial audit.
It's away from a clean getting, I think.
Absolute.
Sure.
The whole rest of the evening. Only thing between us and.
So this is, uh, item seven on the agenda. We're going to get a update from our auditor and introduce itself for the record and FinCom's here as well, so.
I'm Dick Hankston from Justian Hankston. We do the financial audit at the town. When we just jump right in?
You.
You got the floor. Yep. Thanks for allowing us to do the audit. If you have any questions or comments, just feel free to jump right in. I think it'd work better if there were a conversation or a presentation, so ask any questions at any time. First thing I'd like to do is congratulate the town on, on its review of AAA bond rating. I really think it was a big deal. This isn't something that Moody's looks at you by your balance sheet one day and says, hey, we've got a triple A. This is, this is the result of a long process. They, they look at your demographics, your, your financial policies, they look at economic development. So I think that, and they make, one of the things that they do say, and if you look at what their report is, we did the reading, is they think their financial policies are very sustainable. And, and that's one of the big things bond rating agencies look for is they want to make sure that what the, what they can rely on before, they'll be able to rely on later. They want consistency. So I think that there's a congratulation to a lot of people in this room and a lot of people who aren't in this room, those are the planning board members and people who many of them belong to the town that have a lot of input into the bond rating. Just wanted to say that. Also, the town, the town has a finance play team in place. We, we do a lot of municipal audits, from top to bottom. You have one of the very strongest finance teams from top to bottom. However, having said all that, I'm going to audit that we find things to write about financially just so. The first management audit comment has to do with the capital, capital stabilization fund. At May 6, 2013 town meeting, uh, there was an authorization to make a transfer of 196,000 dollars into the stabilization fund. It, it didn't happen until the next fiscal year. Now, this isn't a big deal. It didn't affect your free cash. It didn't affect your, your financial statement at all because it was reserved. However, when you're looking at this in a historical context, it's good to know when, when this capital stabilization fund started and how much you put in each year. So we just recommend that the entry get made in a little more time we manage. So it was a May vote. It should have been made, the entry should have been made and transferred in, in June. So when you look back, so in 14, you had made another transfer into it. In historical context, you might look back and say, hey, we made two transfers in one year into it and that's not really what happened. So. And the next comment has to do with the circuit breaker fund. When I was here, there was a lot of conversation and I was involved in a lot of conversations about the circuit breaker. I added this comment because it was, I quoted the DLS website, technical assistance section. And it's a pretty concise version of how, of what the uses of circuit breaker fund can be used for and how long it can be used for. And I think it's important because in the past, circuit breaker funds could be carried forward year after year after year. And a couple of years ago, they changed that because I had some, I had a couple of towns that were carrying forward substantial amounts of circuit breaker. They had four years worth of circuit breaker. And the Department of Education and the Department of, the DLS's local services, they looked at it and they said, well, if you have four years worth of circuit breaker funds, maybe you don't need circuit breaker funds and maybe we should be giving it to, to other communities. And the ones that were carrying forward substantial amounts were wealthy communities. So they said, if you don't spend it within one year, then you have one year's reserve on here. They also give you another method that you can use it in the current year. I think the way you're doing it is the right way to use it, to, to reserve it and have it for the next year. That way you don't get caught in a hole with circuit breaker funds go down. You, you'll at least have a year's heads up. You'll know what you have in your circuit breaker funds for the next year's budget before the budget process begins. So I think that, I just tried to explain that as, as much as possible. And I think they did a good job on this, on this call there. Next comment has to do with the police detail account. Typically policemen get paid in advance of the reimbursement for those, for the details. So your police detail account always operates in a deficit. However, at the end of 2013, it was a significantly higher deficit in the past. So we kind of looked at it with Orin and she had said she was aware of it. And what had happened is that the billings hadn't been going out in a timely manner. So that's important because there's, there's, in any, any town if we go to, there are some people who go out of business and don't reimburse the town for their, their police details. And the longer you wait to bill them, the more they bill up and, and although yours appear to be mostly to larger, well-established companies, the longer you wait, the more the likelihood that somebody's going to go out and you're not going to get reimbursed for it. So we just say, suggest that, you know, you do your billings as, as soon as you're doing your payment to the police officer, you match them. And I believe that's what you started.